All right, thank you and welcome to the Sherburne Select Board Meeting of Thursday, November 13th, 2025. We have a long executive session and then followed by an open session. In attendance, we have Marion Neutra, Dan Sickel, Jeff Waldron, Paul Durensis, and myself, Stephen Tsai. I am going to begin by asking the Assistant Town Administrator to read the executive session agenda, please.
Good evening. Item number one, the Union Town Council pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, we got potential litigation in Section 21a7 to comply with our act under the authority of the public records law, general law, Chapter 4, Section 726, and suburban construction versus DCAM 449, Mass. 444, 2007, to discuss privileged communications with special town council, Chairman Pappalainen. Item number two is pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21a7, to comply with our act under the authority of the public records law, general law, Chapter 4, Section 726, discuss privileged written legal opinion regarding board health regulation of A to U septic systems. Item number three is pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation where the chair declared that an open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigating possession, Phoenix Partners, Marlboro Development LLC versus SherwinZoni Board of Appeals Housing Appeals Committee, number 2024-06. Item number four is a strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations with Sheriff and Police Association pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21a and 2. Item five is strategy session to prepare for contract negotiations with non-bargaining union employee pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Section 2, Fire Chief. Item number six is strategy session, discussion to prepare for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a and 2 and 7, and suburban construction versus DCAM 449, Mass., 2007, Town for Vacancy.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the executive session agenda? Right, you're not going to get a motion relative to the executive session.
I lose approval of the executive session agenda as read by Assistant Town Administrator.
Seconded.
All right, moved in seconded, all in favor, Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Before we enter into executive session, the Board of Health also has a forum present, so I am going to ask them to open their meeting.
Good evening. It is November 13th, 2025, at 6:09 PM. I now call the Sherburne Board of Health to order. In the room, I have with me Steve Constantine, myself, Julie Dryfist, and in hybrid, we have Darrell Beersley. Tonight, we have one item under executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21a7, to comply with our act under the authority of the public records law, general law, Chapter 4, Section 726, discuss privileged written legal opinion regarding board health regulations of A to U septic systems. We will be adjourned directly from this executive session and not returning to open session. I so declare that having discussion of this topic in open session would have a detrimental effect on the public bodies negotiating position, bargaining position, litigating position, or ability to obtain qualified applicants. By rule call, we move to executive session, so I move that we move to executive session now. Steve?
Steve Constantine?
Aye.
Darrell?
Present.
Darrell Beersley, aye, and present.
And so we move to executive session.
All right, and I also declare that the Select Board needs to go into executive session for the many, many reasons that were outlined by the Assistant Town Administrator, and I move that we now enter executive session.
Seconded.
All right, moved in seconded, Marion?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. We are now in executive session. All right, welcome back into the open session of the Sherburne Select Board Meeting. It is now 8:04. Can I have the Assistant Town Administrator read the open session agenda, please?
Please, after I read the agenda, the Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. I've had no question of public office. Items can be taken out of order and tropics not anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. First up, we have the update on the police accreditation certification with Chief Galvin. Item number two is the consideration of use of surplus funds for a grant repayment of $4,000, and Chief Galvin will be here for that. Item three is the consideration of signing a memorandum of understanding between the town of Sherburne and the Sherburne Police Association. Item number four is the update from the Groundwater Protection Committee, Lieutenant Trump Trainor will be here for that. Item number five is the consideration of signing a letter of support to save money with Greenie, Amelia Lando, our sustainability minister, that she revealed again on Zoom. Then we have a consent agenda, which is the TA payroll warrant draft minutes of October 9th, a one-day liquor license for November 15th for the library with Polly Bonds, a one-day liquor license for November 22nd at the community center with Polly Bonds, a one-day liquor license for November 23rd for Uly Farm, celebration of the turkeys, with David Whitebauer, who to you, on your select board reports and TA update.
Thank you. I have one amendment to the agenda, is that we remove item number three because the MOU is not ready for signing. Any other amendments?
No other changes. I move approval with that one revision.
Seconded.
All right, moved in seconded, all in favor? Aye. All right, item one, update on the police accreditation certification, and we've got Chief Galvin here.
All right, well, excellent. So we've talked about accreditation before in the process we've been going through, and just to briefly kind of rehash some things, it's kind of a two-step process, tier one, which is the certification process, and tier two, which is accreditation. So tier one requires us to meet 178 standards, and we get evaluated by an outside group of assessors from the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. So on July 29th, 30th, and 31st, we had our scheduled assessment, so we had three assessors from Captain Dan Campbell from Marlboro Police Department, Lieutenant Joe Zangatti from the Walpole Police Department, and Sergeant Brian Tebow from the Mansfield Police Department came out to perform our review. And so our two-and-a-half-day review kind of ended abruptly after five-and-a-half hours. And the way the review goes is they go through, they do the review, and if they find a problem, and if it's a minor problem, you can correct it immediately, and then you just do a little memo that says you've corrected. If it's a little bit more of an in-depth problem, and it takes some time, you fix it, and at the end of the assessment, you submit that to the commission for review to make sure you've made up the problems. So after five-and-a-half hours, our assessors left, because as Captain Campbell said, it was the best assessment he's ever done. We had zero corrections, and a two-and-a-half-day process took five-and-a-half hours.
Wow.
So it went from there, and I reviewed by the commission. So on September 16th, the commission voted to approve our certification, and on October 29th, Lieutenant Ted Stone, Sergeant Exo Havelis, and I attended an award ceremony with the Accreditation Commission where we were officially awarded certification. So we have a nice plaque and a certificate that we'll display in the community room at the police department, so that we've attained certification, but we still have 162 standards to go. So as a famous former football coach in New England used to say, we're on to a point. But it was excellent, it was really, it was impressive. I think one of the best things is Captain Campbell from Marlboro, they have an agency that's been accredited for years. He took several of our forms that he was going to utilize and implement at Marlboro because they were better than what they utilized. So it was really impressive. The team did an incredible job, and I'm really proud of what we were able to accomplish.
Well done.
Wow, excellent job.
We're on our way. You know, we talked 25 years, Paul, we're going to get there.
Great, well, congratulations, and thank you so, so much for all of your hard work.
The second thing, we're not as quite as exciting. So as you may remember, in 2023, we received a couple of grants towards our body camera purchase. One of them was a $40,000 federal grant. We went through the process, we made our purchases, we submitted all our receipts, we did everything, and we received our reimbursements. We then underwent with the Bureau of Justice Assistance a review. Pam Douse was with us for that review, I don't know if Pam's on tonight, but it was pretty intense, and it was a really, it was a learning experience, we went through a lot of things. And one of the things we went through on the review was some of the parameters in the grant. We had applied for the cameras and then a lot of other things that go along with the system. Our award was for $40,000. As part of the review, what happened was is our award was only for the cameras, not the other things we got, and it was for the purchase of 20 body cameras. So I can say, we have 20 new body cameras that we got. The problem arose in the vendor that we worked with, we'd worked with a bunch of vendors and trying to make our choices, and gotten a lot of demos and things like that, so we got a couple of demo cameras from this company that we're going to utilize, and the reason we were getting 20 is so we had a couple of spares. So when we went to place our order, we were placing an order for 20, and they said, we're going to give you 18, you just keep those demo units that you had and use those as your spares. So we placed an order, we got our 18, we paid for everything. So the way the grant worked as a formula, it was actually, we only could get $2,000 of reimbursement for each camera we purchased, so the invoice was only for 18. So through the review, they said we were only eligible for $36,000, so we have to return $4,000 that we already got in reimbursement. So Deb and I spoke about it and thought the best course of action, the best way to do that would be use the surplus funds account. We have plenty of money in that account, so what I'm asking is for approval to spend $4,000 from that account to repay the federal government some of the money that they already gave us.
So I hate giving money back to the federal government.
So do I.
And I wonder if we just don't buy two more cameras now?
Because the actual, the price would be more than, there's probably another $5,000, so we would have to pay, and we don't need them, they would probably just sit on the shelf. So to not, to spend more money, because we'd have to spend over that $4,000 to get them because they actually cost more, we had another grant that supplemented the rest of that funding, so we'd end up spending money to not utilize it. But I'm still trying to figure out how I'm going to return that money. That's another whole part of this process.
Do it in pennies.
Yeah. Don't try too hard.
You can't anymore.
They're just not making new ones, they give so good old ones.
No, it's actually, well, maybe in the coming weeks when people come back to work, someone will be able to answer these questions on how we actually give that money back.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's where we're at, I apologize for that. But it was definitely, in talking to Pam, it was an eye-opening process. I think we talked about this when we were awarded the grant, we were one of only three applicants in the Commonwealth receiving this grant from the federal government. It was the Sheriff and Police Department, the Massachusetts State Police, and the Middlesex County Sheriff's. So it was pretty impressive that we even were awarded the funding, you know, we just made a little mistake in the calculations and not completely understanding the way the grant worked, and we have to give some money back.
All right. Motion relative to...
I move that we give back the $4,000, I'm choking on it.
I know. Don't worry, I will claw for something else.
Paul, I would have thought you would have been last for this one.
And then we take the money from...
The surplus.
The surplus, yes.
I second your motion.
All right, moved in seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Have a good night.
All righty, onto item four, update from the Groundwater Protection Committee. Mr. Trainor?
I hope you can give me 30 seconds to get set up. Guys, have a long evening.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much for the invitation to join your meeting. The Groundwater Committee was last here a couple of years ago. I'm going to overlap a little bit, because we've been working on a couple of projects that have taken three or four years, but I'm excited to go over them with you, and my objection, my goals here are to just do some of these updates and talk about some current focus in these ongoing projects. And just to remind the board, many of you may know this, this committee is made up of people appointed from multiple committees and boards in town, so myself and, trying to remember who's with which, myself and Adrian Frankel are appointed by your board, and then we have Steph from the Planning Board, Meredith from the Water Commissioners, Barton from the Board of Health, Dave Sossen from Elder Housing, and Andrea Stiller from the Preservation Commission, so we have really good broad representation. This is just a shot of the website, we have a lot of materials for residents on the website. We also have an email node, and we typically get one or two emails from residents with questions. By the way, feel free to interrupt me anytime, although I know, how many hours have you been here? It's been a while, I'll try to get through these.
It's all right, we're good.
You're good, feel free to interrupt.
We get paid by the hour, we're okay.
Oh, good.
The rate's not great, though.
But I have up here the mission statement, I'm not going to read it, you've got this in your packet. Just to summarize, the interests of the committee are really focused on groundwater quality, so I stole this graphic up, upper left, from the USGS, and we worry about common contaminants, where they might be coming from, and the interactions with the groundwater, and we focus on these topics like hydrogeology and climate change, and we're lucky, on that committee, we have two chemists, we have a biochemist, we have a geologist, we have an IT person, and we have a retired university writing professor, so it's a nice mix of insights in all those areas. The challenge for the committee, studying groundwater, it's under our feet, it's hidden from us, we jump on any kind of testing information we get from public and private wells, surface water and everything, and on top of the challenge of getting any data, of course, a lot of the trends or processes under the ground take anyway from days, years, decades, centuries of change, so that's the kind of things we worry about. I got two slides kind of listing a bunch of things we work on, we meet just about every month, usually the second Wednesday of the month, all by Zoom. I'm going to go into some of the testing programs, that we have gotten some data about well water quality. We do help residents with testing questions and evaluation of test reports, recommendations on treatment and that thing. One thing we do at all of our monthly meetings is review a lot of public information. We check monthly data coming in on our 14 public wells in town. There's another website the state has for posting any hazardous waste releases, so we search against what's happening in Sherburne and any update reports. In this town, luckily, we don't see many new 21e sites, probably one or two a year. Most commonly is telephone pole transformers falling down after an accident. Most of them do not have PCVs anymore, so it's small oil. The other, most common thing on a residential side is leaking oil, heating oil, and we, you know, might get one of those a year, and I'd like to remind everybody, there's a lot of people in town with heating oil, get on your home insurance, the heating oil rider for another couple hundred dollars, because if you have a leak of over 10 gallons, you have to report it to the Mass DEP and start a cleanup, and that can get expensive.
Can I ask a question, Tom?
Sure.
Did you get data from the wells that were undertaken at Laurel Field when they were looking for irrigation?
Yep.
So you've got all the analysis there?
I'll mention that in our mapping.
All right, I want to get you out of order. Yeah, yeah.
We did. So I learned, when I was challenging the airport on the cancer clusters around the airport, they had this bunch of experts come in and say that PFAS contamination comes from the rain, that it's, don't look for it in the ground, you look for it in the sky. And if you apply that to Sherburne, that means all of Sherburne is at risk from rain bringing down chemicals, and how that gets into the wells and so on and so on. I just want to be sure that you are... Oh, I'm painfully aware of that. The claim... You know, PFAS is found in the North and South Pole, and it's in the atmosphere, and it's coming down. And we're finding it on Antucket in the foam on the ocean. Yep. So when waves come in, and they look beautiful and everything else, but that white foam is imminent hazard PFAS. So... We're going to get into PFAS. Okay. And finally, drought. Definitely everybody here is aware, we've been through three major droughts in the last six years, so the state has a drought management task force, let me try to monitor the reports that they're coming out with every month. Luckily, most public and private wells in Sherburne are very deep bedrock wells, and they seem to be much less affected by drought, but we do have some shallow wells. Going on, list of activities, we do try to do some outreach, we did a lot more a couple years ago, we'd like to pick that up. We have on our website the recorded seminars on septic and well basics that we still direct people to. We have been doing a lot of review, as all town boards have, on a lot of development projects in town, and we have provided some support to the new water and sewer district, and we're very excited to see club and water potentially coming into this town. I'm next going to talk about the mapping project and get into what I hope, some very positive news about the mapping project, and then we can get into less positive topics like PFAS. I wanted to share with you this little slide on the six interns we had for this project. This was through ARPA funding, $16,000 initially, that thanks to this board and the advisory committee funded three years ago. We had a series of these six interns, and they did just a fantastic job and brought a lot of mapping and GIS skills. As you know, the town does not have any GIS mapping staff, so they were the town experts when they were sitting downstairs in the ground floor. I will mention two of them in particular, the first two, Rebecca from Clark, she set up the original project and database on her Clark ArcGIS account. ArcGIS is the most common commercial software for GIS. The next intern that followed her, Levi, took one look at it and said, well, that's great, but you guys don't have an Arc license, why don't you use a freeware product called QGIS? So he switched the project to QGIS, we've stayed with that, and it's been very, very useful. Because anyone, we can share our files with anyone, and they can use the data. I want to give a little summary of what we learned from the project, a couple things. First of all, like most any project, we went over budget, and we came to this board about a year ago and get another $900 to finish, but we were able to log through close to 1,600 properties, these were all from the files in the Board of Health and the Concom and Building Department downstairs. The interns would look through the files, trying to find any data or maps on wells and septics, and for this project, we were able to map the locations of approximately 87% of the wells, and interestingly, most of those locations came from septic reports. Septics are so much more regulated than private wells, so that's where most of the location data came from, but explained some of the other major fields we were interested in learning, and I've got on the right side here a little graphic of a typical bedrock well. Of course, we were interested in the distance, most of the property files had no information on the wells, you know, like 60% of them, but 37% had the depth, about 31% had the depth to bedrock where the casing, you know, first hits ledge, static water depth, we got about 30%, and then the yield similarly down to about 30%. Another important parameter we were interested in having the interns measure was the distance from the well location to the edge of the leach field or cesspool, and that's what this column is here. But the averages might interest you, the average depth of these wells, it's about 380 feet, depth of bedrock was about 28 feet, casing depth, normally the casing goes deeper and gets sealed into the bedrock about 45 feet, and the static water depth about 28 feet, and that static water depth is within the well, that's very different from water depths you might hear about in a Board of Health discussion about a PERC test or something, digging into the ground and seeing evidence of groundwater, very, very different, but related to the water depth. So that is, we've learned a lot from this, and thought it was very worthwhile. Similarly, for septics, we found about 90% of the locations, but there's probably a lot of homeowners that might have data, if they sent it to us, we could map their locations that aren't in the database yet. Any questions? You're allowed to ask you. Some examples of the work products we're getting out of this, certainly, we're doing maps, we've done maps for recreation, I don't have that here, but we did a map showing where they're irrigating wells in relation to their neighboring wells, this happens to be downtown, everybody, of course, is worried about location of downtown wells. From the QGIS, you can generate spreadsheets of any area of town you want to show all the data. We don't have any of the property owners in this database, we purposely didn't include property owners, although all of this is public information. And then another area we did, you may or may not be aware, but we have a lot of transmission lines through our town, we have the oil pipe line, we have power lines, we have two railroad lines, all of those lines, there's a lot of vegetation management and pesticide treatment and everything, and when I found out about that, the Board of Health typically every couple of years gets management plans from, say, the railroad or the power companies, and they provide maps that show the buffers that they're not going to spray around, and those include wetlands... And those include wetlands that are mapped and public wells. The private wells are ignored, but they say if you can tell us where your private wells will not spray in that area. So we've been sending them locations. Here's an example. I realized just now that the dot is too small and you can't see it. But there was a well from the new complex at fifty-nine North Main, serving three houses. And that was within the hundred-foot buffer of the pesticide application. So they're gonna skip that area now. We've done that for a number of homes.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yep.
You have this two dimensional map of all the well locations. You know the depth of those wells?
Yep.
With Q G I S, can you convert that to a three D image?
We're working on that.
Because one could see, you know, different maybe bedrock water flows.
We're interested in elevation and we know the location. And between the state and the federal government with LiDAR and everything, you might know this. They really mapped the topography of the whole state. And since we know that latitude longitude, we can get an estimate of some of the mass G I S layers. Is that a hundred and fifty feet above sea level? Is that a hundred and sixty-eight feet above sea level? Not only that, but those other distances, we can subtract from that the well depth or the depth of groundwater. So we're thinking about what we can do with information like that. Yep. All right. A less positive area and the area that Paul brought up was PFAS. And this is a very big concern the committee does have. This is, and I hope all of you had a chance to read it at some point. The committee put together some data, which I'm going to share in a couple of slides here, to the select board this time last year about our concerns about growing nitrate and PFAS concentration in our public and private wells. And I show these two graphics. Remind people, we've got a septic system. You're familiar with that. We're letting the solids settle out, letting the liquids, you know, spread out through the leach area. Those systems do a very good job taking care of the biological agents. The viruses, the disease-causing, you know, biological components. The microbes in the ground destroy them. But what a lot of people don't appreciate is any of the chemicals we're putting in our system. From washing our PFAS-treated, you know, water repellent clothes. A lot of personal care products have PFAS and other chemicals in it. The nitrates that our body is excreting, none of that is treated by the leach field. And that's going right into groundwater. The other graphic I put here, I just want people to understand and it's not clear from a lot of things people learn about our regulations is if you take a look at a leach, every leach field is a hazardous waste site. It's creating a plume of chemicals and nitrate under all of our yards. And our regulations, which are really based on the biological concepts, really set up separations between leach fields and wells of say a hundred feet, a hundred and twenty-five feet, a hundred and fifty feet. Different numbers. Nobody told the PFAS not to go past a hundred and fifty feet. I mean, it's really crude. Our regulations are really limited. So that, we really have to worry about migration and transport of our contaminants. Much wider range than what the regulations would suggest. And to point that out, one of those early slides, I mentioned two studies that we finally got some data on our wells. One was a nitrate study. That nitrate is a natural chemical. Our body is excreting. It's also fertilizers and everything. Naturally, around here in Sherborne and New England, background nitrate is like right around detection levels. About point one milligrams per liter, part per million. Turns out the average for about forty-one wells that participated in this pre-study put on by the nonprofit Arc Cap. The average was, you know, an order of magnitude large at one point seven ppm. So we're having what people feel a septic in the average well. In Sherborne, if we look at three kind of concentration, mid, low, mid, and high, about forty percent of the wells were seen above two ppm. That's below the ten ppm federal and state limit for what's considered drinking water quality. But that's approaching health concentrations of health concerns. So it is something of concerns.
Tom, this is great. And I put my data analyst hat on. I saw the numbers and jumped in. So just question with how to interpret the private well data. So thirty-four out of fifteen ninety-seven wells, so pretty small sample.
Very small sampling. That is one.
Yeah, I mean, we wish, we always wish we had, we had all the data. Any concerns there about, to use the fancy term, sample selection bias? That maybe the people who volunteered for that study were people who had, you know, were more concerned about.
We're definitely concerned.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it just makes it so hard. It's so hard to interpret.
Yep.
Really interesting and, you know, highlights, highlights a challenge. But hard, it's hard for me to know exactly what to make of it, given those issues.
And we would love more data.
Yeah, of course.
The state recommends in their model well regulations for towns to have towns require people to test at time of property transfer.
Seems like a good idea.
The town doesn't have that.
Seems like a good idea.
Dover has it. A lot of other towns have it. I would recommend that.
Yeah, yeah.
So you would know. I mean, we tested our well when we bought our house. I think most people do. That's definitely the recommendation. And I'll mention in this PFAS data, a similar small sampling, thirty-four wells in Sherborne in a free state study three years ago. Again, if we look at like three concentration levels, the light blue is under detection levels. And in PFAS, the state has the lab sum, six different chemicals and mass PFAS six. And the existing limit for drinking water quality is twenty parts per trillion, nanograms per liter. But what I want to show in these pairs of comparisons, on the left is private wells. Across the state in this study, they did a very small sampling. Only sixteen hundred and sixty-eight wells of a half a million people on wells. About seventy-three percent were clean at the two parts per trillion. Whereas in Sherborne, we had a much lower level of non-detect. And similarly for our public wells, the story is even more difficult. We had thirteen, we have fourteen public wells in Sherborne. Thirteen of them were tested and all of them had detectable levels and levels much higher than the twelve hundred and eighty-six public wells across the state. So we're concerned about these high levels. We went a step past that for the PFAS study and two things happened. One is the federal government, maybe our wear dropped. The proposed drinking water limits from two of the PFAS chemicals to four parts per trillion, PFOA and PFOS. We took a look at the thirty-four Sherborne homes. Eight of the eleven, eleven of them were above these four parts per trillion of the thirty-four. And eight of those eleven, I learned the locations, eight of the eleven were in our one acre RA zoning. And all of the other thirty-four were spread out in the larger RC and RB, two and three acre. So in talking to D E P and other people, the first direction they said, you have a, what's, the suggestion was you have a septic density issue. You've got too many septic systems close to too many wells. And by septic density, the people that study, you know, large towns, cities, countries, they don't look at gallons per day. They don't look at bedrooms. They don't look at things like that. They simplify it, number of housing units per acre. So septic density for our most dense zoning is septic density of one. So that's where most of the problem lies, we believe, with nitrate and PFAS. And one last slide on this topic. We noticed a trend at the newest public well in town, which is the Fields Development on the western side of town on Washington Street. In that their nitrate, they've tested for PFAS once. It's right at around, just above two parts per trillion. But the nitrate tripled in concentration from point five, six up to one point four six. And that's a very short time, in five years. And we were shocked that we're getting this linear, almost linear distribution. It's kind of a shock to the people to do this. And if you extrapolate out that trend, that would bring us up to health concerns in another four years. You know, we don't know if this will continue. It's a lot of different factors affecting the concentration. But clearly, you know, that density, thirty-two units, the leach field is up here. And the well is downhill. And so the assumption is the flow is to the wetlands.
This is just above a Holliston public well also, right?
The Holliston Zone.
Down stream of that.
The Holliston Zone two, it might be hard to see in this light, is this shade of red.
Yeah.
I've got the Holliston Zone two here.
Yeah.
From Brook Street, their wells, that should be showing in this corner here. But I happened to have clipped that at the Sherborne border. But yeah, we're, that's in the.
We knew this when we reviewed the field of Sherburne. We knew this was what happened.
Everybody warned, everybody warned.
It was a given.
Everybody warned.
No doubt about it.
I just want to give you a flavor of the things that we worry about. I know we, a lot of the time, you've seen this before. This chart is a year old. Now, twelve of our fourteen wells, our public wells are over twenty parts per trillion. And all twelve are above the four parts per trillion. And I know Jeremy's hard at work with getting treatment systems installed and designed for some of the town wells. So that's the main thing I wanted to cover. This was just the summary from that comment letter. The concern we have is about septic density in this town. Particularly with things like ADUs and other things coming out. We're really excited about the development with the North Sherburne Water and Sewer District. To bring some relief to this town with public water. For people dealing with this, you know, they're on the hook for treatment systems to protect their homes. And then they can be expensive. So that's our update.
What do you propose about the septic systems? You say it's too dense. What do you think we should be doing? Having a centralized sewage treatment plant?
I think in our downtown area, particularly in a lot of our RA, the groundwater is contaminated. The groundwater is contaminated. Adding a sewer system right now is closing the barn door after the worst is gone. Me personally, it's bringing in clean drinking water.
M W R A water?
You could consider a town well, if you could find an area of Sherborne that was productive of enough water. But then you've got to protect that area for the future. Other towns, particularly Dover has done a very in-depth study. You can find it on the website. They've looked at the costs of both M W R A water and expanding their limited town wells. And I think that report suggested that M W R A would be, they'd both be very expensive projects. But might be, if they're both about the same cost, why not go with the M W R A? It's always going to be the gold standard for water quality. The M W R A tests two hundred parameters every day on their water. Two hundred parameters. We test for a public well like this well, once a month, you know, a number of parameters. Some of the public wells that are in Sherborne are mainly businesses and churches. They're tested once a year. M W R A water is just an incredible resource.
Tom, given all the, so North Sherburne Water District, when that comes to be, well, you know, bring M W R A water to that section of town, obvious challenges in getting it beyond that. I mean, I share your view that that would be really helpful for town center, but obvious challenges there. At what point do you think people are going to need, if the M W R A water hasn't happened or hasn't happened yet, at what point do you think people are going to need to start thinking about doing filtration, you know, systems on their wells to?
People are doing it now.
No, I know some people are, but at what point do you think it's going to be?
And they need it now. People are doing it now.
So your sense is that, say, in the RA district, you know, that's something people would want to be, would want to be considering?
They should, at a minimum, they should be testing.
Yeah, to consider.
At a minimum, they should be good testing for nitrate and coliform bacteria at a minimum.
You can't get the carbon filters. There's such a demand for them. So PFAS removal stuff. I get people asking me, where can we get, because there's a run on them. They're selling faster than they're making them.
Sure.
So even if you want one, you're looking at a two or three-year wait.
I hadn't heard that one.
So you ought to order it now. That's what, that's the message.
Order it now and test two years from now. So you're not living in pain.
Yeah, I just want to, well, first off, thanks, Tom. This is an incredible amount of work. And I just want to give a shout out to the groundwater protection committee. You all may not remember that it was only in the last master plan that we called for reactivating a groundwater protection committee. And the committee got themselves organized. And that's only, what, seven years ago? I mean, this is really impressive.
Yeah, it's great.
It was on the first one, first groundwater protection committee.
Yeah.
That was back in the eighteen sixties.
It's altered the wayside, but now it's so important.
It's a great assembly of data and information.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for sharing the info and the interns as well. You know, even back when we were, you know, approving the money for it, I was like, oh, great interns. I wonder what interns are like. And then it's like, yeah. Got to see their faces and see what they majored in and what they're doing now. And I'm like. And I'm like, these just seem like very impressive.
I forgot, I forgot to thank all the town employees. Jeremy and Diane and all the Board of Health. And the interns really relied on the people downstairs, Jean Greco and Ellen Hartnett, Mark Orm. They're a great, a great resource.
Alrighty, thank you.
Great.
Thanks for all.
Thanks, Tom.
Alright, just a reminder.
Can I have a question?
Oh, yes.
Sure. Okay, W. Tomorrow, Hollister. How is all this information going to correlate to new developments? Is there going to be a standard for everybody having like a development of five or ten houses, having their own wastewater treatment plants? I mean, is that going to be taken, I mean, seriously, with all the developments that have been going on? And now the town of Holliston wants to put a DPW next to Sill Brook, which abuts Jackson, Parks, and Moore Lane. We went through this ten years ago with another earthmoving company that wanted to store not fun stuff right there on the Brook. So, I mean, who's going to take this into consideration for future developments of big parks? I mean, that's huge. It's this bad already. I'm just wondering what, is it the planning board? I mean, do you guys talk to the planning board? Will the planning board get your report, Mr. Trainer?
We've shared, one of our members is on the planning board still here.
And.
She's years old.
It's a serious concern.
And the Board of Health as well, which is one of the leads on applying regs to protect, you know, to deal with septics in wells and protect groundwater.
It doesn't always come to fruition in some property developments. But yeah, I just hope that somebody lets everybody know how important this is. How we're over two percent, two point whatever parts per million. I mean, that's huge.
Well, I think one good thing, though, is with the Cooley Street projects, we may not be subjected to forty B projects much longer if we have affordable housing, you know, above the limit, so.
I don't know what the deal is on Farm Road, but that was going to be a dense.
Well, but it's down from thirty-two units to, what is it now, twelve?
Right, who knows?
Or maybe fewer.
Yeah.
But I mean, just saying, you know.
Yeah.
The Cooley Street properties are going to have also wastewater dealt with. So isn't the plan?
Yes.
Yeah, wastewater goes to Nada, to Nada, yeah.
So the waste, the stuff, the most contaminated stuff is going to go elsewhere. Not staying shortly.
Well, we also didn't have wells on the property, so we weren't drawing a general chemical plume closer to the town. So that was another benefit of it.
It's recommended and we're getting rid of the.
And aren't we glad we didn't put the PFAS soccer fields on top of the largest aquifer in Sherburne, Laurel Fields? I mean, tell those people, will you? Those parents. Anyway, I just get upset, yeah. I've always been here for forty-four years and it's been a lot of change.
It's being renovated in a non-PFAS way without using artificial turf. It's all going to be natural.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but you know, that was a big argument a few years ago at the town meeting. Or the DPW or whatever, was that a town meeting?
It was a town meeting.
Town meeting, that was at DPW, yeah.
I mean, that was very heated and I was sweating bullets. I mean, anyway, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's a huge education project. Yeah. Anyway, thanks. Kudos to the groundwater protection committee.
Yeah, thanks, Tom, and thanks for the committee.
Very impressive.
Alright, item five, consideration of signing a letter of support for Save Money with Clean Heat. And for that, we've got Amelia Landau, our sustainability manager.
We made you wait all night, I don't guess. You've got to talk to the agenda people.
I meant to call you until eight, so. So two weeks ago, we discussed the Save Money with Clean Heat campaign currently going through the state legislature. And we, you know, I drafted up a pretty generic letter. And we decided that we didn't want to reference specific, you know, specifically like bills and numbers, just because we weren't sure how the verbiage was going to change. And we wanted to reference something from, you know, a town document like the Declaration of Climate Emergency from town meeting a couple of years ago. The draft version that you have in front of you, hopefully, it's in the packet.
It's there.
Should, that I represent to create, should reflect those changes. I will say, however, that since Friday, there have been some changes in the direction of that legislation, which is now going up against kind of a basically counterproposal by Representative Cusack? That means that there is now an alternative bill that is being considered and will change course rather dramatically for a lot of these issues. So I just wanted to bring that up and have some of my friends here think about how that's been developing in case we want to consider any further changes before signing the letter.
So. Yeah, I could take it from here. First, my colleagues here and I are from the Upper Charles Climate Action Group. And we very much appreciate your efforts to support climate action in Sherburne and at the state level. However, as Amelia has alluded to, events at the State House this week underscore how changes are warranted to your endorsement letter of Save Money with Clean Heat. Now, first, let me explain quickly what's happening at the State House. A large energy bill was introduced on Monday, and it is making its way through the legislature. Now, this proposed bill has some problems. Let me just summarize, I'll quickly mention three of them, and I think you'll get a sense for this bill. It is going to roll back, the proposed bill will roll back the state's two thousand and thirty climate goals. It will gut MassSave by hundreds of millions of dollars and remove electrification and decarbonization from MassSave's directives, while adding incentives for gas furnaces. It will also roll back net metering, which allows owners of solar panels to sell excess energy back to the grid. Now, these are just some of the things that are in this bill. Now, let me cut to the Sherburne endorsement letter. As it is currently written, it could be misconstrued as support for this bill that is currently before the state legislature, because the Sherburne letter does not identify the bills it supports. Now, we, those of us here tonight are asking that the Select Board make two changes to the letter. First, we are requesting that you identify your support for the Save Money with Clean Heat bills. There are five of them. And use that language, the Save Money with Clean Heat bills, or identify them by number and name. And secondly, we respectfully request that the letter be addressed to the state TUE Committee. And that's the Telecommunications Utilities and Energy Committee. And that committee is the first committee that screens any legislation before the state that is addressing energy or utilities. And we also ask that the letter be addressed to our state reps, James Arina De Rosa, who has co-sponsored all five of the Save Money with Clean Heat bills, and Senator Roush, who has co-sponsored at least one of the bills that comprise Save Money with Clean Heat. Thank you.
Okay.
So could I suggest that we give this back to Dan? And who did you work with?
With Amelia, it's mostly Amelia, I just provided a little.
The two of you work?
I want to make sure that we kind of, you know, touch on this because the fact that the sticking point last time was whether to include the exact bills or not. So I want to make sure that you all have the opportunity to discuss if you think that that's still appropriate in the context.
Is there a timeline on this?
Yeah, so I'm Donna Trainer from ninety-seven Washington Street. I think there is a timeline. These bills are making their way through the TUE Committee. And people are coming in to testify, volunteers are coming in to testify to their own experience about these bills and why they think it's a good idea. And we're trying to get as much support for these people by asking the towns to write letters like this in support of the testimony. Holliston recently finished their letter with the names of the bills mentioned, I believe.
I haven't, it hasn't been signed yet, but I got their approval to draft it, including the, I showed them both versions of the letter, the first one I brought to you and the revised one that you're seeing tonight. And they prefer the original version that mentions all five bills explicitly.
Well, I think, maybe I'm speaking for myself here, but part of my hesitation two weeks ago when we heard about it was that it wasn't explained fully enough. I didn't really get what was important about these bills. And now I do. And besides, I trust this group of sustainability people in our town. I know that you've given it a lot of attention. And I trust that it's supported by James Arina De Rosa. You have a good draft here, and I suggest that I would trust Amelia and Dan with whatever input they need to revise the letter so that it does what we intended to do. And then if there's something more we need to do to reach out to Arina De Rosa and Senator Roush, maybe you could let us know what that is. But I think Dan, with your help, should be able to approve it to my satisfaction, without bringing it back for another vote in two weeks.
Agreed.
Dan, what do you?
So I'd be very happy to work with Amelia to do that. And was very helpful to get the background on the legislation. And it sounds like the energy interests are, you know, pushing back as they do. All of that said, you know, my concern when this came up a couple of weeks ago is that identifying specific legislation and endorsing it, I think, gets beyond the expertise and purview of the Sherburne Select Board. So I would be really happy to adjust the language in a way that made it clear sort of which side we're on. I would be cautious about wanting to endorse specific pieces of legislation, because they're going to change. You know, you can do the analysis of is this, you know, which, there may be bits that are really good for Sherburne residents. There may be bits that might be good for some other parts of the state, but not so much for Sherburne. And so I think for me, I would be, you know, this is where we were two weeks ago. You know, if I'm going to sign my name to a letter saying I support this legislation, I want to read the legislation. I want to know exactly what's in it. And I'm not sure that this five-member group wants to spend a few hours delving into this kind of legislation to really come to that level of understanding. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we could work out to adjust the letter that would make it very clear which side we're on.
Directional letter, if you say.
Exactly, exactly. Without being too specific about, here are the five, here are the five pieces of legislation that we specifically endorse.
Would you be comfortable with basically disavowing the one bill? You know, if you're not confident in saying we support these five pieces of legislation that could influence us?
I'm confident we could come up with language that would make it, that would make it very clear which side, you know, which side we're on.
Yes, but I think I differ, I think.
Yeah, I think we do, I think we do have a different, I think we do have a different view here.
If that was not explicit, you would need to see the bill that is currently moving through the state legislature. It's massive, you know, there's, I think there's over one hundred sections in the bill.
Right, right.
And so I would urge you to explicitly state in this letter that you support the Save Money with Clean Heat campaign. And that's all that needs to be said, because it's known that what's in that campaign are the five bills that we presented two weeks ago.
Yeah, for my part to do that, I would need to dig a lot deeper into knowing what, exactly what's being endorsed as compared to the broad concept. And, you know, my colleagues here may disagree with that, but that was my, that was my concern before. And, you know, that's why, again, you know, this board could spend, we could do a four-hour seminar on the legislation and really become experts and so on. But I just don't think that's this board's expertise.
No, I understand that, I understand that. I guess I'm arguing the counterexample that to write a letter that clearly states your position, that you're not advocating this alternative bill that I just described. You would really need, I think, to look at that. And that's going to be a major undertaking.
I think any of this is a major undertaking to understand very complex legislation.
Seminar that's maybe an hour, there's going to be a webinar on November twenty-fourth.
If, if everyone here wants, if everyone here wants to do that, you know, that would be great. I just think we're getting beyond, my concern is we're getting beyond the expertise of the board here.
Because your concern focused mostly on talking about specific bills? Or so we'd be satisfied with, we support Save Money with Clean Heat campaign? Which is not saying we support individual bills, but we support the overall overarching file?
If it were me, I would use slightly different language than that, but I think it would convey that idea. I think, you know, that's where I would want to go.
And I think I'd be perfectly adequate to be talking about the campaign in general and not specific bills. I cannot share your concern about specific bills.
Well, I was in favor of including all five bills from the get-go, so.
So I.
No, you should be, you should be talking that way.
I may, I may be, you know, I may be the outlier here, but.
I'm further out than you are. I just think we're being too specific in even naming a specific bill, even if it's very. I would go directional on what our goals are. Because the bills will keep changing, even though you're not happy with the one now.
No, I think you're right. And I think perhaps, perhaps the compromise here is simply stating in the letter that you support the Save Money with Clean Heat, the goals of the Save Money with Clean Heat campaign.
Well, if you put the word "goals" in front of it, I may not, they may change the Save Money with Clean Heat legislation. You added the word "goals" in front of it just now, which would make more sense. But I'm not happy with anything that's specific, because if it changes, we don't know what we wrote it for.
And I think this, my understanding is the Save Money with Clean Heat campaign is those five bills.
Yes, yes.
So saying those words is really the same as listing the five bills.
It is.
So it, you know, saying, saying, which is why, again, I think Amelia and I could develop some language that would clearly convey the direction with just some slightly different language.
I think that language that you're describing is language that not only places in a positive as it currently is in the draft of like, we support these because it will benefit our residents in this way, but also language in the negative of, and we do not want this legislation, not, we don't have to mention the size of the bill, but this legislation that would do things that don't.
I think that's very doable.
Yeah, would that cover it?
I think that's very doable.
I mean, I think.
Yeah, it was difficult for me to hear you, but we don't want this Sherburne letter.
Right, understood.
Advocating for the wrong bill.
Yeah, understood, understood.
Explicit language seems to me to be appropriate here, but clearly we differ.
And the other suggestions about which committee it's addressed to.
Yeah.
You know better than we do, that's great. And absolutely to James and Becca, absolutely. It sounds like we have some homework.
Sounds like we do. I, because I understand the, you know, somewhat urgent nature of business, it seems like the energy industry has kind of responded to the campaign a little bit with this bill coming up so quickly. I don't suppose that there would be a way for us, you know, tonight to, you know, reach some kind of like verdict of like,
Don't think we want to, I don't, I don't think we want to try to edit as a group tonight.
Because you're supporting other towns, what are some of the other towns doing in this regard?
So Holliston on Monday said, yes, we all agree to sign a letter similar to the first letter I presented to you. first letter I presented to you. I'm going to update some of the language just in light of how the bills might have, you know, changed slightly since last, the, you know, four weeks ago or whenever it was that I presented that first one. They also suggested that I reach out to the school committee there. I know that we're a regional school district here, but I know that David Green is also working on the Dover Select Board as well. He does work, I saw the unofficial bodies talking to them about this. I, I'm inclined to approach the school committee in Holliston. I know that I, I wouldn't want to overstep into the regional school district kind of being its own entity here, but because one of the bills directly is sort of tied into sort of like collective bargaining through the schools, I think it's appropriate that they would have at least some stake in it. There was one or two other towns that people have also reached out to, if I'm not mistaken. Wellesley? Wellesley, yeah.
Wellesley, Hopkinton, Ashland is, is being reached out to. You know, there's, I'm forgetting some of the others. Now, I received an email shortly before this, before this meeting from Dawn Durning-Hammond, who was present at the Select Board, the Holliston Select Board meeting, and she said that her understanding was that the town was endorsing, was endorsing the Save Money with Clean Heat campaign and that would be in the letter, it would be stated as such. Yeah.
Well, I mean, I am comfortable authorizing Dan and Amelia to come up with something that reflects the feelings of the Select Board and just sending it off, because our next scheduled meeting is not for three weeks.
Yeah.
So I would assume that.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, moved to seconded. For the discussion, Marion?
Oh, you got me to vote?
Yeah, yeah. Did you hear the motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yea or nay?
Yes.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Yay.
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And I'm also aye.
Thanks.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate the update.
Consent agenda. Consent agenda. I was trying to set you up there, Paul. Moved to seconded. Oh, yeah, right, we don't do a whole poll. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, Select Board reports, aye, everything?
Thing on reports, we had Veterans Day event, it was well-attended. We had most of the board of selectmen there. We had quite a turnout. It was, it just seemed like a, a lot of enthusiastic people. There were a lot of veterans there. From the feedback I got from the veterans, they were very touched and moved by what we had done for them. There was a luncheon for everybody and we got a lot of thanks and appreciation for that.
We gave you brownies from leftover. I think we should also, but the biggest thing to me, though, was the veteran who spoke was phenomenal and the two students, one from Pine Hill and one from the high school that were, these, these young kids, Pine Hill kids, talks, it was, it was star, phenomenal. Thank you, Amelia.
So it was a well-done program. I want to be sure we continue it. Reason why I bring this up every time we do this, is make sure that we continue to do this every year.
I was just gonna add thanks to Diane for all her work in helping organize it and Diana Hook as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
She did know well.
It did.
We had a firefighter that has a phenomenal voice, Jesse Raisia.
Yeah, that was amazing.
Yeah.
We have to get him to sing more songs. He only sang one, sang one, but given that voice, we could put him to work, two more songs.
Actually, I have one brief report, just that the negotiations with the Dover Sherburne educators is underway.
Teachers Union?
Yes, Teachers Union. We've had about three, no, four meetings. Two of them were just our negotiating team and now we've had two meetings with the union. First one was just setting ground rules and so now, last night, we just had our first actual negotiating session, so it's underway.
So we get a point oh 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 five percent vote on the contract.
Yeah. Okay, any other Select Board reports? All right, TA update?
Yeah, just want to offer Sean to give a bit of an update of the work that he's been doing last few days on Western Ave for the traffic calming project. So just wanted to turn it over to Sean to give an update there.
Pretty cool, yeah.
Thanks for your work on that, Sean.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
So everyone probably remembers last town meeting, we had an article to do some traffic calming on Western Ave. We've been working all year to set that up and we, we tested, we actually made a fake island at the garage to kind of prove out, we bought some equipment to do it. So yesterday and today, we built eleven islands. They stretch from Stevens Lane, which is, you know, right either side of the entrance of the Barba Reservation, all the way down to Brook Street, in a couple of key locations. Obviously Maple and Western Ave is a, is a key location. We built them tonight, if the roads dry out, which it looks like they're gonna, the line painters will be in and they're gonna re-stripe Western Ave so that the double yellow goes out and around all eleven islands and marks them out. And then next week, we'll be able to put some reflectors and the reflector tubes that everyone will recognize if you drive through Boston, a lot of the bike lanes have them, protecting the bike, you know, that they almost look like a knockdown reflective tube. We're gonna put those at either end and some of the longer islands will get a couple in the middle. And then we have some stick-on reflectors to help visibility. So it's been long studied that, that we should do some traffic calming on Western Ave and, and that's gonna help, it's gonna help, it should, it should help with slowing people down and keeping them, keeping their attention on the road. And then also, you know, at the key intersections like Brook Street, Whitney Street, it'll help keeping people in the lanes rather than cutting in behind each other and, and turning too early and kind of bumping into each other, which they do a lot at Whitney Street. So we're excited, I'm sure people have probably gotten some calls, I know the town hall has, DPW has, people don't really understand why they're there. Hopefully it'll make a little more sense next week. Right now, of course, there's cones on top of them, because they're hard to see, but that, that should get better next week. And trust us that we have highly qualified plow operators and they're, they're well more than capable to go around the islands. That's been the biggest concern, people have been writing online that they're gonna get wiped out by the plows. We built them well enough that they're gonna, they're not gonna get wiped out by the plows. That's for sure.
The plows, it's repair work.
We don't want to damage the plows either, you know?
It's more than likely you're replacing the plow and the plow frame if you hit one of those, they're in there pretty good.
So Sean, that's a great idea, I'm glad you did it, but I have a list of about a hundred roads to follow if this works.
Well, you live on one of them that would be a good candidate for it, in fact, near one of the crosswalks. While I have your attention, this wasn't on the list, but the crosswalks on South Main Street are nearly complete. If anyone remembers, we got a grant for, you know, upgrading the crosswalk at Cider Hill at South Main and East and West Goulding at South Main, very dangerous crosswalks. And they've been rebuilt with new approaches, ADA ramps, and there's, it's sitting at my shop right now waiting on the contractor, the state has delivered the, the lighted crosswalks, you know, the signs, the RFPs that you'll recognize like we have in downtown, and, and better signage, so we're excited about that. We have about another thirty days before the deadline to get those installed, so they, they just got delivered, so they, they should be installed in the next couple of weeks and we're excited about that. Those are good candidates for islands as well, as soon as we prove them out on Western Ave.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean, take care.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sean.
Is the only other thing to point out, you only, you have one meeting this month and three meetings scheduled for December, so.
But the weird one is the one that's in the last week of December, right?
December, the fourth, the eleventh.
And the eighteenth.
And the eighteenth.
Three weeks in a row.
Three weeks in a row.
Yeah, but one of them is because of the.
Yeah, yeah.
Just bring presents when they come to America.
Yes.
Likely, you know, the week of the eleventh.
Eleventh, right.
December elevens, you probably will get removed.
Yeah, that makes sense, I won't, the eleventh, I'll be in New York anyway, I won't be here.
The fourth, you'll have your class, tax classification hearing.
Right.
So we need to keep that, but the eleventh will probably get removed from schedule.
Great.
Can I make my motion?
Sure.
To adjourn?
All righty, motion to adjourn.
Tag it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before you leave, can, can you guys do an emergency meeting on Wednesday?
Yes.
Seven o'clock, right?
Yeah, I responded, I have to do it by Zoom probably, but I can do it.